Ms. Aller, can you take the role, please?
Yes. Dr. Kavasos.
President.
Ms. Chen.
Here.
Mrs. Donner.
Here.
Mr. Hosang.
Here.
Mrs. Hunley.
Here.
Mr. Riffel.
Here.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Here. And can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffel.
Aye.
Dr. Kavasos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye. Alright, well, we would like to welcome our guests. I know we've we've met Ms. Brandon and Mr. Faltis in person. And are there others on the on the line?
Me, if you can see my hands. I'm Kathy. Kathy Schoenfelder from the corporate office.
Okay, that's right. We've exchanged some emails. Nice to see you, Kathy.
Thank you. Nice to see you too.
Alright, well, I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to our our search firm. Whoever wants to kick it off and lead our discussion.
Okay, let me see if I can share the screen. Alright, can everybody see this?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. David, do you want to go ahead and get us started?
Sure. Well, thank you for allowing us to be here this morning. I'm in Dallas watching snow out my window. We don't get that very often, so you're talking about the kids being excited. I've got a 24-year-old in the living room looking out the blinds right now, so we're pretty happy about that. But we're happy to be here this morning. You've got myself, Dr. Brandon, Mr. Yezelton, I think it's I saw us getting on the line. This is just kind of what we call typically just this first meeting. We're just trying to get timelines down, make sure that you're aware of what's going to be going on over the next particularly the next couple of weeks, and then really over the next couple of months. And it'll be a time for you to kind of get your calendars out because we're going to be going through some dates. Kathy's going to run through the timeline a little bit to where we can all commit to some dates where we can all be available. Obviously, as you know, this is, you know, a critical thing that we're doing here, and so we want to make sure that we're all on the same page. So Kathy, let me go to the next slide. Some of the things that we're going to cover today, as I mentioned, the timeline, we're going to talk a little bit about the 31 Qualities Online Survey, that that's going to be going out to your constituent groups and to you, and so we will request that each of you take that. We'll talk about developing the promotional video or slides or whatever kind of promotional information, marketing information that the district wants to put out. There's some things that we can do, and then there's some things that you can do. We'll discuss some of those sorts of things. Then the next thing there in the blue is approval of online application and advertisements. We have a copy or a link to the application. It's been reviewed by your council, and so we just want to make sure that you're familiar with what people are seeing when they're applying, because obviously this represents you. And then the advertisements, there's some, we'll just have to make some decisions. There's some no-cost things that we'll share with you. There's some things that we include as part of our contract, part of our package, but then there's some other optional things that that we'll discuss with you, and we'll talk about the benefits of each of those and which ones we think that you really should consider. Then there's just, there'll be a slide where we just, it's just a general information. We're going to ask you several times, as we've said before, this is your search, where we're going to ask you several times if there's more information you need from us or something we need from you guys. Then we'll need to make some decisions on reimbursement of candidate travel and their expenses. We'll talk about, and Kathy will do this here on the timeline, talking about whether the first round interviews you are considering doing Zoom or virtual interviews, whether you want them here in person, and obviously then that can impact what kind of expenses you have. And then we'll go into your closed session or executive session and discuss salary for the position. We have kind of a national survey that we've put together. I think your staff has kind of a Virginia survey, if you will, and then we'll just talk about how we want to advertise that. Okay? Okay?
Okay, so my in-house person, I should have removed the question marks. Sorry about that. I'll be working with Beth, and I have worked hand-in-hand with Beth so far. She's got a great start on everything and has picked it up really quickly. And then as of now, Sarah is the board contact. If that changes at any point, I don't know when you reorg your board roles, if that changes, just let me know. So we will have contact with Beth probably more often than Sarah, but if Sarah, Sarah, if you would like check-ins periodically or something, just let us know. We would be happy to do that. Either just through an email or a Zoom or whatever. That's probably more important once we get into the actual recruitment. I can send a weekly update that says how many applications we have so far, but that's something that we can discuss later. So now we're going to kind of start on the timeline. Don't be scared by anything that you see. There's a method to the madness. So stage one is where we are today. We're going to, it's our first meeting. We're going to discuss the timeline and stakeholder involvement and the dates that have been set aside for that. Stage two is when we meet with those stakeholders and the 31 Quality Survey is put together and up and running. Stage three is the recruitment period where the application is open on our website. The national ads are posted, the state venue ads are posted, and we reach out to candidates. When we conduct our confidential one-on-one board interviews, which we will be arranging in the next 10 days or so, I wanted to wait until after this meeting took place, just so that we kind of went in order. One of the questions that we ask both of the board members and the stakeholder groups that we meet with is or are, do you have any candidates that you feel would be good for the role that we should reach out to? So we keep that information internally, but during this recruitment time is when we make those calls or connections with those people, whether it's somebody that the board recommended or a stakeholder group. We don't say who, we just say you were recommended. So that is when we do both through our website, through the national advertising, and through, like I said, conversations with names that have come up. Stage four is the application deadline, so it's actually when the application closes and our team starts screening and vetting those candidates. As an example, if there are 30 applications that come in, we, our team will look at those 30 applications and cull it down to probably eight to 12-ish that we feel rise to the top based on what we've heard from the board, from the stakeholders, from the profile and themes as to what the district is looking for. So that's when we start screening those eight to 12 candidates to get them ready to present to you. And then that also takes place in stage four where our team will be in-person talking about those candidates that we screened. I do want to make it clear that you will receive a link, one link, that takes you to each application, so you will see them all. But those eight to 12 candidates that we screen, you will get more information on them. There will be an individual link that takes you right to their application. There'll be a link to their video that we ask them to do, and there will be some reference comments. And then when our team is there in person, they will tell you how they answered our screening questions, what we found on the internet, and reference information as well. So that all takes part, place in stage four, so that's a busy stage for us, for our team internally, because screening and vetting takes a lot of work, waiting for references to call back. We do make contact with references. It's all done over the phone or by Zoom. We do not have them fill out forms. It is a conversation that we have, and we are very proud of that. We know that there are others that do not do it that way. So we do make those connections. Stage five is when the board will interview the candidates, first round, second round, and then at the end is when the finalist is announced. So we'll go ahead and get started on the timeline. I tend to talk very fast, so if somebody needs me to slow down, please say so. So stage one, this is where we are today, which is January 9th, so this kind of starts everything running. So tomorrow, yeah, I'm looking at my calendar when I look this way. So tomorrow I will provide links to the survey, the 31 Quality Surveys to Beth to get information out on your website. We will notify all internal candidates on our end, and ideally the district should start notifying the stakeholders and constituents of the stakeholder meetings on January 22nd and 23rd. Those dates have already been pre-planned, pre-approved, pre-discussed on your end. So Beth has been working very hard to get that already arranged for those two days. So stage two, I have the 13th on here for the survey link, but I probably will have it ready tomorrow. So there will be, and we'll take a look at that example when we get back a few slides, but there is a 31 Quality Survey. There is a survey that goes just to the board, and then there is a survey for the community. It is the same exact survey except for the fact that the board has their own. So as a board member, you will select your name and then complete the survey. There's 31 qualities. We ask you to select the top 10 that are the most important to you, and then you can provide comment. The same goes for the community survey. They select which group they identify with, parent, student, teacher, administrator, support staff, non-parent community member. They do the same thing, select which group. They select their 10 qualities and can provide comment as well. And so when we get to that, I'll explain what the purpose of that is. I have the survey closing on Monday, January 27th at 8:00 a.m., so that gives people a good two weeks to do it. And I have a closing after the stakeholder meetings on January 22nd, 23rd, because that's an opportunity for us, our team, during those meetings to remind people to take it, because getting input is a two-step process. It is the in-person or virtual stakeholder meetings in addition to the survey. People, it's not one or the other. We want people to do both, but they both, but they cover different things. The stakeholder meetings, we ask specific questions, you know, about the district, about the community, about leadership qualities, things that might be an issue or something that might, this new superintendent might face coming in. So those, that, the stakeholder meetings ask for different information than the survey, so it's two different things. So we want to make sure that people know if you do the survey that we still want you to do the meeting and vice versa. So we have the 22nd and 23rd set aside for stakeholder meetings. Like I said, Beth has got that just about narrowed down and finalized, so we hope to see a schedule perhaps tomorrow. I know David will be in the district on the 22nd and 23rd. Yvonne will be there on the 23rd. Corey and myself will be covering virtual sessions on both of those days, so you'll have all four of us working on that. Again, the survey closes on the 27th with promotional information, a draft promotional information due on the 28th, and so we will discuss that in just a little bit as well. On the 31st, we have a meeting scheduled, a virtual meeting at 11:45 your time to go over what we found out, the results of the survey, the feedback that we received from stakeholders. It's really important for you to see that information. So we provide it in the form of themes, or I know David likes to do Word Cloud. Some associates do themes to the questions. We give you the question and what the common themes were so that you can get an idea of what people are saying. That information is provided by question. It is not provided by group. We want people to speak freely and candidly and feel comfortable doing so. So we ask for the information, but we do not give it back to you by group. So you don't know who says what. You just know what the common themes were. So that meeting on January 30th will be to go through the themes, go through the survey information, and for the board to come up with 10-ish qualities that they feel are the most important as to what they're looking for in a superintendent. That information will then get put into the promotional information that is being drafted and put together with the hope of, on stage three, that the application would then go live on Friday, January 31st. So that means that we, the posting would go live on our website. The promotional information would be attached to it. The promotional information would be emailed out to the database that we put together, of which I anticipate it probably would be close to 1,400 people out of our database because we narrow it down by size and salary and that kind of thing. National advertising would also be posted. Our ad would be provided to Beth for posting with the Virginia or state venues as well. And the application would then be open and close on March 2nd, which is a Sunday. So it's open for just just over 30 days, which is ideal because the the national venues, you're paying for 30 days of recruitment, so we want you to get your money's worth. So that takes care of stage three. So on stage three, that's when we would do the checkup or check-ins with with Sarah if she desired. Like I said, I can do weekly emails saying we have this many applications at this time. Sometimes it takes a while. It is not uncommon for people to apply toward the end of the deadline. I don't know why that is. It's probably to give me a little bit more gray hair than what I already have. But it takes time. We ask for candidates to complete an application, a cover letter, and provide us with letters of recommendation and a resume. And it can take time sometimes for candidates to get letters of recommendation, and it's difficult for candidates to get them if they're a sitting superintendent because obviously they may not tell their board that they're looking. And so we, you know, there's, it's all timing and spring break issues and all those kinds of things. So that takes place in stage three. And stage, so let me back up. The application closes March 2nd, which is a Sunday. During March 2nd, between March 2nd and I'm going to say March 14th, our team will be screening those eight to 12 candidates. So I have selected March 19th, which is a Wednesday, for our team to come back. They would be in-person to meet with the board to talk about the candidates. That's a big meeting. It's a multiple-hour meeting. They're going to go through, like I said, the candidates that have been screened and vetted. We're going to talk about interview questions and that kind of thing. So I suggested March 19th for that meeting. I know you have already have a board meeting on March 18th. We do not want this to be part of a regularly scheduled board meeting because board meetings are already long enough. So I tried to do my due diligence and pick different dates. So I'm going to stop here. Does anybody have any thoughts on the March 19th date?
Wednesday, I assume?
We're leaving for Cosmo the next day, the Thursday.
Let's go.
That's just a lot of bad of time, out of work time.
Is it that week or the following week?
It's that week, so the Cosmo starts the 20th.
How long is this day? Is it a full day?
Yeah, I mean, is it something that could be later in the day so that it's not, what time is it scheduled for?
I didn't put a time down for the 19th, so whatever time would work for you. And if you need to switch days, we certainly can. We cannot move it up to the week before because we need time to get the candidates screened. Yeah, let me see, when you guys have, you have spring break the week of April 7th. My goal was to have the search done before spring break, so we don't want to push it back too far either.
What about Monday, the 17th?
If there's a way, I think Corey is in the waiting room. There's a way to allow him in?
We're too, we're sorry. I didn't get, don't see that on my end. Poor guy. He's missed half of it.
We'll tell him we just started.
Yeah, right.
We saw your your request for that. We're, our clerk is trying to look into that right now.
Okay.
Okay.
I would say Monday, the 17th would be much better for me. It's just that Wednesday, even in the evening, it's going to be tight.
Works for everyone else.
The only thing that I have is my girls with Irish dancing, March 17th is St. Patrick's Day, so I know they're going to have performances going on.
Can they come here and perform for us? No, I'm kidding.
I can give them to come.
Oh, that'd be fun.
On March 17th, I would say no, they're probably already booked.
Okay, well.
But I mean, if I'm the only one that can.
Are those in the evening or are you in the day?
I can do any of those dates.
Those would be in the evening, probably?
I can't do any of them. I can do any of them.
Can't do any of them?
I can.
Oh, you can, okay.
Open.
I'm a thumbs up. I can do.
We have at least five. What about you, Dr. Kavasos?
Whatever.
Okay. You're whatever, you're whatever.
I'm my own boss.
The session's over, so.
So why don't?
I, I mean.
How many hours are we talking about?
I would, I would set aside three for sure.
And it can be any, can everyone do any time of day?
Whatever you want. We will adjust, because it'll be probably David and Yvonne being there in person. So obviously Yvonne is closed. David will have to travel, but he would probably travel the day before.
I don't know if like, does morning help you, Andrea, or does morning help you on a Monday?
That, it would probably be better, yes.
Monday morning, can we, can we do a Monday morning slot?
Monday morning, the 17th?
So, I mean, I could, I could do Monday morning, just the 19th. It's actually better to do the afternoon for me, just because I need to go to, I have to go to work because we can be in person three days.
So you would want 19th afternoon, you could do.
Not 19th, but with 19th.
17th afternoon.
So 17th, 17th is better than 19th. I just, like a, like a, like a one to four would be better for me.
On the 19th?
Is, would the 20th be better for everybody?
No, we're at it, we're all out of town.
Conference.
On the 21st.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
Andrea, the 19th doesn't work at all for you. Or there's no.
It is not, like, the afternoon would be better.
On the 19th?
Yeah, but I have to be done by four.
Okay. Does one to four or 12 to three or something, 12 to, 12 to four window, just in case, does that work on the 19th for everyone?
Yes, 19th would be better.
Is that okay, Andrea?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we have a sort of noonish to four, hard stop at four on the 19th window.
I like that, sort of. Okay, perfect. Thank you for that.
12 to four, I mean.
12 to, I mean, I just was.
You do 12 to four, then if we run over.
Right.
So I would encourage Beth, I would probably encourage snacks, food, something for that meeting, just to kind of tide people over. So we will go on with stage four, so we now have agreed on March 19th. And then we automatically jump down to the next week, which is the week of March 24th for first-round interviews. Anticipating that we would bring eight to 12 candidates to you, I would assume that you would probably interview five to seven candidates. I would suggest no more than seven. And for first-round interviews, we usually recommend about 45 minutes, with the second-round interviews being a little bit longer. So that being said, we need to determine, set aside either one full day, two evenings, two afternoons, however you want to do it, the week of March 24th. And we also need to decide or discuss whether you want those first-round interviews to be virtual or in-person. As David said earlier, a lot of districts are sticking with virtual just because it's it's free. There's no expense to you or the candidate in that. All we ask is that every candidate is treated the same. Even if you have a candidate that is in a nearby district and you have somebody that's in Alaska, they are either all in-person or they're all virtual. They're all treated the same.
And that was going to be my first question, so.
Yeah. It's just, you know, the world is too small, and we don't want people feeling that they're going to get treated differently. And and it's just like, also, all candidates are asked the same interview questions, so we try to keep it as even as we can. So do we have a couple dates or days that week of March 24th that we'd like to think about now?
So that's right after we get back from.
If you interviewed six candidates, you could do three each day. You would then need to meet with our team virtually. We, we do not participate in in the interview process itself. We will schedule them and arrange them and that kind of thing, but we do not sit in on them, so to speak. So you would need to meet with us afterwards to go through the scoring like you will do on March 19th, so you will be used to it by then to have discussion about who moves forward as finalists.
So we meet with you after we've done all six or seven, not after each one? Okay.
Correct, at the very end, yes.
I don't know, guys, who's got the? Do a, oh, a weekend? Yeah, Saturday, just knock them all out? Or?
Available, whatever.
Or two days, take, make an evening and then have a couple on a Saturday?
Anything works for me, so just pick days.
I'd rather just do a Saturday.
I'm, I'm pretty open at this point, so it's kind of up to you.
Whoever has the busiest schedule.
Yeah.
Who has the most restrictive and busy schedule?
Is everyone willing to maybe take, take one Saturday and just knock it out, and then we don't have to worry about work? Is that, yeah, maybe just do three in the morning, have a lunch, three in the afternoon, if we end up with six, something like that?
Yeah, let's just do that.
Then maybe schedule the follow-up with them right, right after?
That's fine. Just do the whole day.
Does that sound okay? We'll just take whatever Saturday is in that week and knock it out?
So the 29th?
Yeah.
Okay, fantastic. I like a decisive bunch. So do you want to do those virtually or in-person?
Virtually.
I think we should do that virtually, sure.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Alright, and so then this date, and I will give you a new timeline. All right, and so then this date, and I will give you a new timeline, obviously, after our discussion today. So then this date would be, um, the twenty-ninth as well, following up with us after the last interview. So then we go on to stage five, and we like to keep this neat and tight and running, um, so that we don't lose candidates. So, uh, if we meet on March, if you interview on March twenty-ninth, then ideally, we would like to try and have candidates come into the district the following week for your finalist interviews. There's several things to consider. I would anticipate, I like the number three for finalists. Obviously, it's your decision. Um, I've been in situations before where there's been two and a candidate has dropped out or taken another job, so then that leaves you with one. So I really like the number three for finalists. Um, but again, it's your decision, and you're gonna know more about that, obviously, when you get through the interviews. So there are things to consider. Um, if we go with the number three, are you going to want, um, one candidate per day? Are you gonna want stakeholder involvement? Because that is the big piece of the puzzle. If you want stakeholder involvement, then that affects how you schedule the interviews. Some districts do stakeholder involvement, some districts are just strictly do a board interview. I mean, it's your hire, it's, it's your obligation, it's your, it's your one, one hire is the superintendent. You know your community better than I do. They will obviously have stakeholder involvement in the beginning of the process. Do you want them to have it at the end? And this is not something that you have to decide right now. We just wanna try and get dates locked in. Um, you know, what do you want that stakeholder involvement to look like? Do you want it to be as simple as a community forum held at an auditorium? Um, where you have perhaps three candidates on the stage at the same time. We moderate, ask those candidates, um, the same questions, round robin. Do you want, um, we've done it that way with all candidates on the stage. It can be a little awkward, but they're always very professional. Do you want them to each have their own day, where they have a tour of the district, go into some buildings, meet with some principals, some staff? Um, do you want those groups to give feedback in any way, or do you just want it to be kind of a conversation? And then perhaps if you do a single day, each candidate with a day, then you have a community forum for each candidate during their day? Uh, there's so many pieces to consider. The downside of having individual days, if you want stakeholder involvement in the form of a, as an example of community forum, is that then you want to try and get those people to come back two more days.
Yeah.
Um, because ideally, we would like to have the same people come. We don't keep track, but we wanna have feedback be, again, even and somewhat fair. You know, if you had fifty people the first day, we would really like those same fifty to commit to the second day and the third day.
Yeah, I, I think our sense is that we would like it to be confidential.
So just a board interview?
Yes.
Okay.
But I'm looking, I'm looking around the room.
I think my, just my one question is, we've had a whole bunch of conversations about lack of transparency within the division. And so I, I'm, I'm fine with it being confidential, but I just, you know, we're, you know, just, just curious from some of the feedback, you know, from within people in the community feel like there isn't transparency.
If I could jump in as a current superintendent who has gone through the process, I'm, I was more likely to apply to divisions that did keep it confidential because if I have a board and I don't want to impact my relationship with my current division, I'm more likely to play, to, to apply if it's confidential. Just, just a personal view.
And I think if, since part of our reaching out to the community, um, earlier um, with the, with the meetings and with the thirty-one point, uh, survey, to me, that is reaching out, being transparent is what we're looking at, looking for, trying to get input from the community. Um, I mean, there are still some things that we as a board need to do in a confidential manner, and I think I agree with definitely with the superintendent, if we have, uh, candidates who are applying and really don't want their name out there at that point, that, that's, I think, a big thing.
And I think you risk, I think you risk having different camps in a community that are behind different candidates and somebody's not going to get their candidate and they're going to be frontaled with the other.
This is our decision.
Yeah.
Period.
Okay, well, that makes it easy. So then I would suggest, you know, one day, uh, you know, whatever time you would start the first interview and then have a little bit of a buffer in between for the second and third. Um, we usually suggest for a second round interview, maybe an hour and fifteen minutes. Um, I think that's, it's gonna be more of a meat and potatoes interview than perhaps the first round. Um, and we will work with you on questions, obviously. That is one of the things that we ask in the stakeholder meetings, is if you could suggest an interview question, what would the interview question be? And we do provide those to the board. Um, it's often very insightful. Um, and there, we get some really good questions, cause they look at things, outsiders look at things differently than perhaps the board does. So is there a day that works well, um, that week? I would probably suggest, since you're interviewing on Saturday, the twenty-ninth, I would probably not do it before Wednesday to allow for travel time, booking travel arrangements. So I might even suggest perhaps Thursday, the four, third, wait a minute, third of April. I know you have spring break starting on the seventh, so, or maybe even Wednesday. Is it your plan to make a decision, um, that day?
Well, that was gonna be my question. I mean, I, I don't know that we can know sitting here right now if we're gonna all be, you know, we're gonna do six, eh, seven interviews and then talk to you. Um, are we gonna walk out of here with top three, hands down, everyone's in agreement? I don't know. We might, we, we might need a day or two.
So, so, but for the day or two, is it that, so, cause they would?
It's a Saturday.
Right, so then they would facilitate us on a second day for another conversation?
So on the Saturday interviews, on the twenty-ninth, we would meet with you virtually after the last interview to go through our rubric or matrix and discussion as to who you feel as a board should move forward as finalists.
Right, and so.
Those finalists, those finalists would then be interviewed that, the week of March thirty-first or April first, however you wanna do it.
I'm just thinking if we, I don't know what the, what, how people are gonna feel, if we're all gonna be in agreement with the same three finalists, or if that's gonna take some.
Well, cause I'm a, I'm a, I guess I thought that with, when we have the finalist conversations, that they would facilitate our, our conversation around who we're wanting to pick as the finalists.
But, but that means that we're guaranteeing that we will sit here in, on Saturday until we have three. Is that what, I mean?
I think so. I mean, the best way you do is if you have, you have a consensus meeting right after you've seen everyone.
Right, that's what we're doing, but I just didn't know if, you know.
I think you ha- you have to sit to drive to a decision, like, I mean, nothing changes. You have your information, you've gotta make a decision.
Mm-hmm.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
And then, and then we would meet with you after the finalist interviews as well, um, to facilitate that conversation again, go through the scoring and, and have conversation as to who the board feels is the right fit.
Okay, yeah.
So do we wanna pick a day that week, or do you want to think about it? I don't know if you all travel over the week of April seventh or?
I don't wanna go into that week.
I was gonna say, it looks like school gets out early on the fourth.
Yeah, so let's do it the third. Third works.
Yeah, I think we should go ahead and schedule now.
Yeah, let's just save the third.
The whole day.
Okay.
Um, well, does that work?
And is that for, um, that's for all three finalists?
Right, that would be for the three, if the number is three, that would be for the three finalists, you know, an hour and fifteen minutes each. Um, and then I would probably put a fifteen minute gap in between so that nobody runs into somebody in the hallway. Those would be in person, obviously, with the candidates coming to you.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, depending on what time you would normally start, as an example, if you started at, you could have one at, you could have one at twelve-thirty, you could have one at one, let's see, one, one forty-five, and then you could have one at three. Or you can do them in the evening, whatever works best for you.
What'd you say, Randy?
I don't know, if you like, take another day off, like, I was asking. Cause like, I don't know, I mean, it's a full day, basically, right there, if you're doing the afternoon. Is it like a morning better, then people go back to, I don't know?
So, yeah, so for me, afternoons are better because I can work in the morning and ch- check out. It's harder to
Yeah.
work it out, yeah.
And they can be in the evening. I mean, if you don't wanna start them until six, that's fine, or five. So, five-thirty, whatever.
No, what, so afternoon, d- does that mean late afternoon for you, Andrea, or does that mean like what, what Kathy just suggested?
I mean, we're far enough out that I can block my count, like, I can block calendars.
So starting at twelve-thirty, say?
Yeah.
Super.
April third, twelve-thirty?
April third, twelve-thirty is the first one and then build it from there.
So then we should start at twelve?
So they would probably.
Perfect.
Around what time?
Then what?
It would conclude.
Like six.
Around, if we started the last one at?
We should meet at twelve.
Yeah.
If we started the last one at three, it would go to what, three forty-five?
Four four.
No.
Four fifteen.
Four fifteen.
Or it'd be four fifteen, and then you would meet with us after.
A deliberation after.
Yeah, right, so till six, seven, at least until seven, okay.
So then you wanna start it earlier, I mean?
No, please no.
Twelve-thirty's fine.
Yeah, I have to, I have to do work eventually, that day. It's, it's the.
Yeah, and, cause if you, if you do the first interview at twelve-thirty, cause you'll have to jump through all your formality stuff ahead of time. Does that give you time to do that before, and then we can actually have the interview at twelve-thirty?
Yeah, we meet at twelve.
Yeah, we're, we would meet at twelve and then discuss any issues that we have and then move on from there.
Perfect.
Works.
Fantastic. Okay, so then, these two dates here would be, um, April third. And I'll work on a schedule, and these dates are just kind of TBD, um, you know, depending on, on what happens. I would encourage at some point in time before the finalist interviews that you speak to council and work on getting a draft contract put together. It might be as simple as taking the one that you have for your current superintendent, um, taking out the name, changing some of the benefits, that kind of thing, but that way you're at least in a good place to get the conversation started with the candidate so that hopefully negotiations don't, um, take too long. Uh, we do advise the candidates, um, to have their own counsel, which I'm sure you can understand. So their counsel will work with your counsel to get it all negotiated and taken care of. So that takes care of the timeline. David, are you still on here?
Yes, I'm sure.
Oh, okay, I can't see you, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Uh, so now, now we talk about building the profile, and I'm just gonna kinda whip through this, uh, really quickly. This encounters or encompasses the stakeholder meetings and the thirty-one qualities. As I said, they are two different, uh, pieces of the puzzle, so we do want involvement both ways. This is what the board survey, um, looks like. It has your, obviously it has your name, you select who you are, um, there's the thirty-one qualities to pick from, you must select ten. And then you have an opportunity to put down your comments. Any comments that are put in by the board stay internal with us. They are not shared with any other board members. Um, the community survey, right, right now, I just have the English put together, um, so we'll discuss foreign languages here in just a second. So again, uh, people pick which group they identify with. If they have a dual role, such as a teacher and perhaps our parent, we just ask that they select one, which, whichever one they would like. Um, and they have the same thirty-one qualities, uh, with the ability to leave comments. These comments are provided to the board, so the board, um, will get those. We did not necessarily discuss them in our meeting. Um, I call it coffee table reading. So, um, the women usually wake up at three AM because they can't shut their brains off for very long, and then you can read that in the middle of the night. That's my suggestion. Um, Beth indicated yesterday that, um, Spanish would be a foreign language you would like.
Excuse me, can I ask a question about this survey, please?
Oh, yeah, sure.
It's, um, so this survey, is that, that is going out to all parents and staff? That is not a select stakeholder group per se, right?
No, that goes out to everyone. So it'll be posted on the district website, um, on the superintendent's search page, uh, however you do it, um, on the front page of your website, and, and word gotten out by whatever method you use to get the word out to everybody in your community. It is not necessarily non-parent community members, civic groups, you don't have to have a child in the district to take the survey. It's anybody that's in the district. Uh, maybe it's a grandparent that had children go through the system, that kind of thing. So that is available to everyone in the district.
Okay, thank you.
Can I see the board survey, the names again, just real quick?
Sure.
Is that that?
Could you make the spell in the blank? Like, instead of check your name, it's like?
Yes, spell correctly, good. I just wanted to make sure so I get mine.
Did I, did I do something wrong?
No, no, I just wanted to make sure the spelling of my name was correct. It is, thank you.
Okay. I took them off the district website and I tried to double-check a million times, but you know. Um, okay, so Spanish is a language. Uh, what do you feel about any other foreign languages? I will be honest, Spanish is the most, most often completed foreign language survey. We have districts that we have put together, you know, five languages, and Spanish is usually the one that's completed. I was talking to Beth yesterday, you know, we do Arabic, we do Hmong, we do, you know, all of these Haitian Creole, depending on where the district is, um, but predominantly it's Spanish that is completed. But I will do several if you feel that there's something in addition to Spanish.
Dr. Harry might have a better sense of that. I, I, is there a possibility to allow someone to request an additional language? Or does it have to be decided ahead of time?
Um, they could probably request it, but we would need to have it requested soon in order to get it out and enough time to, um, you know, get it completed. And, and I don't want us to be in a situation where we have twenty different people asking for twenty different languages.
Okay.
Generally.
I would recommend, I would probably recommend no more than five foreign languages, but we certainly can do that.
Um, our current protocol in major documents is, is just Spanish. We, we, we do have access on the website that you can go and use Google to translate into different languages, but if we're actually recreating a document, it's usually just in Spanish, Spanish.
Is that what we're gonna say with Ben?
Yes, I mean, I know we have a lot of other languages represented, but not, maybe not enough to create whole survey for one.
If you find out that there is, just let me know. If I, if I could, well, I mean, ideally, if I could know by Monday, then they'd still have two weeks, but I know that doesn't, it doesn't always work that way. Um, okay, so we have sample schedules here, which I'm just gonna kinda whiz through. Um, Beth already has this information as well. She's got a really good grasp on putting the schedule together for the twenty-second and twenty-third. These are just some options or samples of what other districts have done. Um, I know we're gonna do a combination of both in-person and virtual, which I think is fantastic. And obviously, that came about because of the pandemic and has kind of stuck. We find that, um, everybody is really, really busy and why they, while they may not be able to join in person, they still wanna participate. So all of the groups are asked the same questions. They are not group-specific. Um, and we tell them that in the very beginning, at the end of the session or at the beginning of the session, we remind them about the thirty-one quality survey. So they're getting, uh, getting reminded about that as well, you know. We keep a head count as to how many people, um, are in each meeting, whether it's in-person or virtual. We do not ask for signup. Again, we want it to be, um, in a situation where they can speak freely. So we do do a head count, both virtual and in-person. Um, okay, so now we are down to the promotional information. And I apologize because I think the link that I had in yours, for whatever reason, did not work. So I don't know if you have a really good, uh, PR person, communications person, if the district already has something that you, you have compiled with district information that we can then just incorporate, um, the information that we need. Um, it's, it's up to you. We used to do flyers, um, which I am a big fan of, but I'm older. Um, but now we do, um, promotional slides, but if a district has their own or wants to do their own, um, that is fine. I am not, um, I don't claim to be a graphic designer. I'm just throwing that out there. Um, but here is an example of what was done for another district. So this is done through Canva, so it's just a slideshow talking about the district. And, and some of these slide titles are the same as what we would have in a flyer or other promotional information. Um, and then, um, this district was, um, a high achieving district, so they had, you know, points of pride that they wanted to put in. It's also a district. So they had, you know, points of pride that they wanted to put in, it's also a district that encompassed several different townships or cities. So they wanted a page put in for each one, um, which would then take you to the main page for that city. Which I thought was a really good idea. Um, and the colors were based on their district colors. Um, we talked about their students, how many in each grade, um, the diversity of the students, special needs, that kind of thing. Um, we also had a page in there for their faculty, they were proud of their accomplishments of their faculty. Um, and student achievement, as I said, they were a high achieving district, so we had a page in there for that. Um, this page is where the survey results and qualities will go. Um, so this one says, obviously Rochester Community Schools looking for someone who and promotes the positive and professional environment. Um, this one does not have K-12, oh yes, it does, K-12 classroom experience. So those things will all be determined after the survey and stakeholder meetings are accomplished. Um, again, we'll look at the survey results with the goal of all of those groups in the community survey, comparing their results to the board. To try and find the qualities that closely overlap. Um, quality thirty-one is K-12 classroom experience, teachers usually rank that quality very high. Um, but sometimes board members don't, so it's just a conversation. Um, and so we have, then that information goes in this page or on the flyer or whatever, um, the board elects to have done. Um, and then we have a page for salary and benefits with the deadline. Now, we, we're, we're gonna discuss salary in just a little bit, but I wanna make it clear, um, if anybody's watching, that we only talk about base. We don't talk about any of the add-ons, so it's just base salary. Um, this one had a, we have a requirements page, um. You know, we wanna make sure that people are getting certified or have done their job, and like in Michigan, there's no certification, it's an endorsement, so it would be different wording. We talk about the application process, we put a link in there, which would take them directly to the application on our site. Um, again, the deadline is there, we do say do not contact the board or district directly, we make that very, very clear. And this is all done electronically. Um, this talks about how the information will be reviewed and what we ask for, which is an exam, uh, the application. Cover letter, resume and letters of recommendation, that standard that we ask for that in every search that we do. And then this one, we had their mission statement and again, a link to um, the application on our website. So that is something to think about because according to the timeline, that draft information would need to be done. On, ready for our meeting. Uh, the meeting is January thirtieth, so I have on here that the draft information should be due or put together on January twenty-eighth. It can be done well in advance of that with just space being left for the survey, um. The qualities that the board selects. So that being said, is there someone at the district that you would want to put this information together? Is, do you want me to put it together? Who's my contact person, how do you wanna do that?
I think that we could probably put this together, we have our district put a pretty decent. Um, slideshow together. Is it possible to have that Rochester one sent to us as a, as a template, just to pass that on?
Sure.
Then we could always send you whatever is done and then if you have input.
Yes, we could create some preliminary slides with the district and the division information, not district. Uh, and then perhaps in that template, you could add the information that you want to, to add to it and make sure we've covered everything. Um, Cara, um, Beth will work with you and along with Cara, our communications expert will work with you on this.
Fantastic. I, I just like to be honest and say whatever you put together will probably look better than what I put together. I always use the example, I've lived in my house twenty years and I have a wall that has nothing on it. Um, alright, so the next page is the application. Um, as David had said earlier, this has already been uh, reviewed by district council. I apologize for the fact that it is so enormous on the screen, I don't know why that is. Uh, but we'll just run through it quick, we ask candidates to put their present position, uh, district enrollment, uh, we ask for base salary. Um, I probably, I don't like that, including any annuity in there, but we have that. Um, education record, while it only shows two boxes, they do have the ability to fill in five. Um, for advanced degrees, so they fill in that, they answer these questions. Um, we try to put it on the candidate to verify their eligibility. Um, they know what they have done in their life, we do not, so we strongly encourage them to do their research. To see if they need to get reciprocity or if they're already ready to go. Um, we do ask about any other languages, we put that in several years ago as we thought that was an important component. Professional memberships, um, employment experience, I believe this shows three, I think they can add in four positions. When they actually complete the application, but then again, we also ask for a resume which would detail more. Uh, we have reference information and then we have um, questions. And these questions were looked at by your council and reworded as needed, so you can take comfort in, in that, that is something that we, you know. Every, everybody looks at it differently, every, you could ask five attorneys and they're all gonna have a different answer. So those have been looked at by your council already. Um, and then now we are down to advertising. So, the recommended, well, the regional information that I have is the Virginia School Board Association, but you look at that price. Um, also I'll let you decide on that one. They, they are, obviously, you know, they, they want you to come to them and if you're not gonna come to them, then they're gonna make you really pay for it to post the ads. Um, and then we would obviously recommend the Association of School Superintendents for Virginia. So I'll let you guys decide which Virginia venues you want to use. At the appropriate time in the process, we will give you the ad to post. Um, it's just a standard ad that we use for every one of our searches, but we'll put the salary in there and the deadline and a link and that kind of thing. So all of, we'll let you um, have that discussion.
Do most, do most um, school divisions or, you know, do most use their state association, whether they're charged for it or not? I mean, for advertising, do they, do most of them go, allow their state board association to advertise?
Some do, some don't. Um, I know Wisconsin charges, um. I think if you don't use their state association, they'll post and I think there's just two hundred and fifty dollars a week. Um, I really, you know, it's all, it's, it's just, and can, I think Kansas charges as well, I don't know about Texas.
It seems like.
Yvonne, do you have a perspective on it, like living here in Virginia and?
Um. If you wanna get directly to the superintendents.
Yeah.
VAS be uh, the option that I would suggest.
Okay. Yeah.
So I don't know what the difference is between the two of these, other than the name, um, and I don't know the cost of this one.
So, so VAS, VAS is for all of the school, uh, superintendents. And some uh, assistant superintendent, some upper level school, uh, based administrators. So you, directly to them. Now, the Virginia School Board Association. Uh, Madam Chairman, um, or Madam President, um. Do you also have a listing of your colleagues?
We have a.
In the school board, in Virginia school boards.
Do we have a listing?
Yeah, we should be able to get a list of, of all of the, the systems and contacts or boards or whatever. Um, we've access to.
So you may decide to send the advertisement directly to.
I mean, also just post.
I'm sorry.
The state website will just do it for free, so I mean, like, you don't have to use the SBA. Virginia jobs, what you wanna get, so.
Yeah.
It's not that, so.
Okay, so we will go ahead and I'll just mark on my list for the school superintendents, yeah, that thousand dollars a month, they, they're pretty proud of that.
Excuse me. Oh, you have it right here, that's okay.
Okay, yeah, so on, on the national advertising, um, this one is highlighted, Edweek is highlighted, so thirty-day posting, we pay for that. That's part of our um, fee to you, it's included in our fee, so there is no cost to you, that's a four hundred and ninety-five dollar savings to you. So that's an automatic. Um, and then the other ones that we suggest are double ASA. Um, and there's two options, you can either do the four hundred and nine dollars for thirty days. Or you can spend um, five ninety-nine for thirty days. The job flash package is emailed to um, supposedly five thousand plus superintendents and that's also the thirty days. Double ASA is, I think, very, very important, I would not overlook that one. Um, I would also strongly encourage uh, NAPSE, that's three hundred and thirty dollars for thirty days. Um, ALIS is two hundred and fifty dollars and theirs runs for six weeks, but they usually run a bit behind, so that's probably why they say six weeks. Sometimes it could take them a couple of weeks to get it up. Um, we have not found a venue to replace that, but we do. Um, ninety percent of our searches, uh, we do that one as well, it, it, it covers, um. You know, all the groups that you're looking for. Um, and then NAS, that's free, so we obviously do that and then there's our website. So Edweek, I, as I said, we pay for that, so there's no cost to you. Um, for double ASA, NAPSE and, and ALIS, we would post those ads on your behalf and then bill you back. Um, to be reimbursed for that, we would provide you with the receipt and an invoice to pay us back.
That adds up to about.
So.
For VSB.
Yes, that's what I was gonna say, it's about a thousand bucks.
Yeah.
So what are your thoughts on these?
Yes.
I think those three, the top, the A, double ASA, the NASB and the ALIS, yep.
And the other ones.
Do you wanna do the four oh nine or the five ninety-nine?
What? I don't know, what's the?
I know, right?
Can you say again what the difference is? This what, does the more expensive one gets emailed?
One, the, the four oh nine is, is posted on their website and, and that's it. This one is emailed out to the people, I suppose, that have signed up in their database or whatever the case may be. So, cause it says it's emailed to five thousand plus and it's also posted, so it kinda has the double dip.
You might reach people who are not necessarily looking, but might be what we are looking for.
Yeah.
For two hundred bucks.
National.
For two hundred bucks at this point, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know.
Perfect.
Interesting names.
Compared to twenty-three thousand dollars.
On this page, I have some optional advertising or advertising, yeah, whatever, optional advertising, options. Um, I'm not committed either way. Um, most districts don't do them, but I'm doing my due diligence by giving you the, by showing it to you. I don't think you need to.
Yeah, and I'll be honest, so does like the district administration, I, that's, that, that wasn't something I went to every day. And so, I, I thi- I think you're covered on some of those other sources.
Additionally, um, the district administration, um. Uh, mailing list or, um, membership is also included in. Uh, the National Association for Schools Superintendents as well.
So they're probably already covered.
You'll be hitting them twice.
Yeah, let's not do that then. So not, I think none of those.
I'm sorry?
I think, I think, I think we're saying none of these.
Okay.
Doctor Harry, does that make sense to you, from your experience?
I think the nas- two national ones.
The ones, if we did all the ones from the previous page, we'd get more than enough.
Almost every superintendent is in ASA.
Yeah.
And the other national associations, so they, everybody's gonna get it through those two big organizations.
Exactly. Alright, and so we are almost done with this part. So we have some just generic questions, do you have any specific state requirements um, for the position? Most districts do not, but I'm putting it out there to ask anyway.
I don't know.
License in Virginia.
Just, yeah, super.
So how does that work with superintendent license, so if I'm coming from, let's say, Maryland or New York?
They have ability to get the license here in Virginia.
That's what they're saying that's on them though, to know how this.
Once, once they're hired.
Yeah. Yeah, so we would um, encourage them, most candidates, if they're serious about their application, will start that process. Sometimes there's um, a fee, sometimes there's not a fee for the reciprocity. Um, I can't speak to every state, but if a candidate is interested, they will already get their ducks in a row and get that started. Um, otherwise, once they are awarded the position, there should be plenty of time to get that done before they would start. On July first, I know there are certain states like North Dakota, as an example, new superintendents. That are coming in from out of state have to take a North Dakota rules or tax class or some thing. Um, but that's, that's not the norm. Um, number two, are there any preferred qualities that the board would like? Um, we show doctorate here, we do not, w- while that is one of the qualities on thirty-one quality survey. And if that is something that the board wants, we usually recommend that it be listed as a preferred, not a required. We do not want to um, discredit good candidates just because they do not have that advanced degree of a doctorate. Um, so that's something to think about and if that comes up as. Uh, one of the qualities that rise to the top, then we can discuss that as well at that January meeting. Um, but at this point, is there anything that you wanna me to put in that box?
Like willing to move.
Willing to.
Willing to relocate.
Well, hopefully if they're applying from California, they're willing to relocate.
I thought that was a requirement.
I think it is in Virginia, yeah.
It, it always has been in, in Williamsburg, in very small systems, you're not required to live in the district sometimes and you travel in from outside. But we have always required it here.
So it's probably worth calling out that you have to.
Have to live in the, in the school district.
Yeah.
And we might wanna say.
Okay.
Preferred doctorate.
Yeah.
Um, I have a question, actually, Dr. Harry.
Being a college town, it's almost expected.
Um, uh, do superintendents.
I would suggest then, on the promotional information, that we put a line in there saying, um, I think. Whatever the requirements or whatever those little headings were, I think we need to put in there then, must live within district boundaries. That way it's there, it's, everybody can see it, it's not hidden, we're not trying to keep it a secret. Because I know that there's some states that you can't say that, you can't ask any of those, that kind of question. Uh, but I think that's a good place to put it and then I will, we will also put in there preferred or doctorate preferred.
Mm-hmm. And then, one, one second, please, um, Mr. Riffle, did you have a question?
Do superintendents have to have teacher licenses in Virginia, or is that, is that my thing they have to take?
Uh, gen- most often, yes, it'd be unusual not to have, but you need the superintendent's license, you don't, you don't need a teaching license. You don't have to, but most, most have experience.
Yeah, I pulled up the REG and it's, I mean, it's like the first, most of them are, but you could have had like a master's degree. And three years of successful like senior leadership and then be recommended by a school board, so there are other things that don't require the teaching. But that's like the last one.
Yeah.
You have CFO can become a superintendent, I mean, there's all kinds of things.
And how difficult is it to receive or obtain the superintendent's license?
It's, it's not, it's not very difficult to, to get that particular license in, in Virginia.
Cause you're qualified.
You don't need an educational background to do it. The recommendation process.
So I didn't know, say it required us to have teacher licenses, oh, and then you get your superintendent license first, you know, I mean, so there's maybe multiple steps to it.
I think, I think we'd probably need to check all of that and I presume the candidate as well.
Thank you.
Are we are, um, I guess we're jumping ahead to three, since we're talking about obtaining licensing, um. Do we know how long that process takes if someone did not have a superintendent's license and had to start it? If we, if we're like, okay, this is our person, but.
I think it's quarterly in Virginia, if I had to be honest. Um, I know the ten-year license, it lasts for ten years, that's.
That's correct. Um, I would imagine if you're appointed in April and doesn't start till July one, they've got sufficient time to do that. And we could try to expedite it for you.
Yeah, okay.
I would assume you'd have it in their contract, right, if they don't have the license by July first and the contract is.
Then they're out, yeah.
Or, or if you understand the timeline for the state's like requirement, they might not have the test by July one, you know, it's like they could have the test by August first or something.
Freak if they don't get it.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, that's true.
Maybe we'll just.
We can have HR, we can have HR provide some information.
That is something that we will make sure, I will put a note on our internal end that when we screen the candidates. That we make sure, that I think that's on our screening report, is about the licensing, um, as well. To make sure that they've done what they needed to do, to get that started. Whether they get the job or not, it, I mean, can't be that much more money. Whether they get the job or not, it, I mean, can't be that much more money to get, get the certification there. Um, and then I have Beth down as the person, um, to send invoices to, so she and I have communicated about that. All right, we're on the last line. All right, so first round interviews, we determine will be virtual, so that question does not apply. Um, with regard to the second round interviews and the candidates coming in, um, is the board willing to reimburse travel costs for those um, candidates?
For the sec- for the ones we bring in for the second round, yeah, right, yeah.
Okay. And, um, i- if they want to bring, or a partner, significant other, um, since it's just doing a standard interview, I'm gonna say no. I mean, they can bring them, if they want to take a tour of the district themselves, but I'm not, I don't think that the board needs to incur that cost specifically. Do things with the, with the significant others, and, you know, they do this whole song and dance and that kind of thing, so. Okay, so that was the first part. Does anybody have any questions about anything that I ran through really quickly?
No. Just, I'm just looking at the travel. Would we include a rental car in that? Would we have someone from the district pick them up, or is it just? Do we just do a rental car?
Just give them a rental car.
Okay, do we have a cap on travel and stuff, like, or like, regional expenses? Okay, super. Thank you, Adam Clark.
Okay, and candidates are very frugal. They know it's not their money, um, you know, so they don't travel first class, but, you know, we all know that flights are expensive. It doesn't matter where you're going, it's outrageous.
Yeah, cause that would be.
David can attest to that.
Yeah, it could be expensive, yeah.
Um, okay, that is all that we have for this part of the process, so I think we need to go into, um, exec for the rest.
Okay, does anyone want to take a quick?
A couple of quick questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, when are we finalizing our stakeholder meetings? Does that happen?
Already. One, it's January twenty-second, twenty-third.
No, no, the groups, the specific groups.
Who's gonna be in it?
Yeah, who's gonna be in those groups, and how many are there going to be?
I'm gonna let Beth answer that question.
Um, it should be finalized by tomorrow. Um, we have a list of different groups, and I've started the outreach. I can send you information or provide it this afternoon if you'd like.
For some, I thought we were gonna, like, share our ideas about those groups. Are those already set?
Yeah, I think they've been set up from the last one, but I do think the board needs to have input, in case we leave out groups, or in case there's someone that you feel is more important or shouldn't be there, I think that does need to come to the board as soon as possible.
I can bring a draft this afternoon.
Okay.
I'm sorry, and to piggyback off of that, Amy, um, do, normally, do you school board members attend those? Do you want us to attend? Nope, okay.
We would prefer not.
We can advertise.
Typically, I I've seen it at some places where an individual board member gets up and welcomes people and thanks them for being there, but typically they'd step out of the room so people feel comfortable sharing positives and negatives if they need to.
I really think it's important, too, to be honest, in the process of like us kind of facilitating a meeting, it's pretty essential. Uh, it goes a lot better from my experience with public officials.
Us facilitating the meeting?
Just being hello, like, thanks for doing this, because I think, like, they're taking time out of their hours, other day, do this stuff.
We can talk about that.
Yeah, I mean, I thought there, I'd heard a recommendation once, like, maybe a Sarah, someone can kick off the meeting, but they need to leave.
Yeah, that's what, as we just said, that's what I'm saying, like, we go, say hello, thanks for doing this. For available to you after the meetings, you know, like, we always are, it's just, they're doing some extra for us, right, so. We can do a little above beyond, anyways.
And, and, and I know that Beth is building some virtual sessions in as well, which is fantastic. Um, as I said earlier, Cory and I will cover the virtual sessions. Um, we, we set up the links for those, and we host those. So links for, um, the community sessions, or however they're being ordered, will be posted on the district website. Links for specific groups such as, or internal groups, I guess, is what I'm gonna say. Administrators, teachers, staff, that kind of thing, those are not posted on the district site, they are rather given to a group representative to disperse accordingly. We do not want people, um, popping into groups that they don't identify with. Again, we don't want community coming into a teacher group, so to speak. But, um, but I do generate all those links and get those to Beth to distribute, and then post on the district website as needed. So, um, if we could have a schedule, um, because the sooner you get the word out, the happier people are gonna be, we all know that. Uh, if if the schedule could be finalized by Monday, or no later than Monday, I think that would be great. That would give your communications person, um, a good two weeks, um, to have the notice out there, if that's doable. Um, I know David is planning on coming in on the twenty-first, anticipating a start of early in the morning on the twenty-second. Um, and I think there's an evening session on the twenty-third, um, so then David will leave on Friday. So worst-case scenario, I guess, the seventh. If we could have a schedule finalized the seventh, um, because I need to get documents prepared on my end, and Cory and I need to mesh our schedules for the virtual sessions and coverage as well. So does that all make sense?
Yes.
I had one question, though. I have one question. After we do the thirty-one, the survey, um, did I hear that we each were interviewed separately, or no?
Yeah, each board member will be interviewed separately by one of our team, and we'll get those scheduled after this meeting. So somebody will be reaching out to you, um, either by email, or text, or phone, in the next few days to get those arranged. I just wanted to wait until after this meeting was done, before we schedule that. That way, if you had any additional questions, they could be answered. So between the four of us, we'll get them, we'll get them dibbied up and scheduled for you.
And then as a follow-up, when, when do the survey links go live to the public?
So the survey links can go live as soon as tomorrow. I have them all done except for the Spanish one. Um, or Monday at the latest, whichever. I'll send them to Beth tomorrow, maybe even today, depending on how my afternoon looks. So it's just a matter of, um, getting them posted on your end.
Okay, and how are we, like, how are we send that out and advertise it?
Yeah, there'll be a link on the, on the website. Have you spoken to Carol about it, Beth? You want to talk about it?
Yes, I spoke with Ms. Wall, and I believe the plan was to have everything, uh, posted on Monday. She was going to compile the information about the stakeholders' meetings and send the links kind of as a, as a package. Um, so that it all went out at once with a lot of information for the public.
Does that mean, when you say go out, does that mean it gets emailed also? Is it gonna get distributed, pushed out, or just having it?
I, I don't know that I can speak to exactly that. I, I think through potentially our website, email, Thrill Share, our normal communication methods, I believe, was the plan, but I can confirm with Ms. Wall.
Most times, we, we, we text, we email, we put it on our website to reach all the people we've contact with. But the website is, is the community, is also community one, so we're gonna find a way to, to get the word out to the community.
Yes, absolutely.
I have not been involved in the conversations, by the way.
I know Ms. Wall mentioned a plan.
On, on purpose.
All right, any other questions about what we've discussed so far?
Board members, everyone good? Right, we will.
And we're ready to go into a closed session when you are.
Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, and, um, we'll be back here at, uh, say, ten after twelve.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
In this special call meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board, um can I have a motion to go into closed session please?
Madam Chair, I move that the Williamsburg James City County School Board convene in closed session for discussion of the superintendent's contract pursuant to the personnel ex- exception at section two dot two dash three seven one one A one of the code of Virginia.
Thank you Mrs. Donner, is there a second?
Second.
Um Randy was a little faster. Thank you Mr. Riffle.
Of course.
Gotta be quicker than that.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Dr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Uh Ms. Chen.
Aye.
And Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Alright, we are in closed session.
All right. Can I please have a board member certify closed session?
Madam Chair, I certify to the best of each member's knowledge the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session discussed only public matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos. Ms. Chen.
Aye.
And Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye. All right, and we have the opportunity to have, you know, if there's any other discussion that we'd like still to have in an open session, if there are any clarifying questions or anything that anyone wanted to discuss, we have the opportunity, but we don't have to.
Swallowing it out into others. Alright, with that this meeting is adjourned. Alright.